Nice job, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
The hour is seven. We will call the Monday, July 26th Dublin City Council Meeting to Order. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Amrose Grooms.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
If you would please stand and remain standing for the presentation of colors.
Detail. Hoop. Right face. Hoop. Prepare for colors. Ready. Hoop. One step back. Hoop. Ladies and gentlemen, please hold up. Present. Hoop. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready. Two. Right shoulder. Hoop. Left face. Hoop. Left face. Hoop. Hooray. Hoop. Ladies and gentlemen, you now may be seated. Proud and let you know how grateful we all are to be here in the main government of Purple Heart City. The Purple Heart is the medal that has a long history.
And I guarantee you that all of us here today were not looking to receive this medal. It happens in war. Some of us have one, some of us have many. And I make it a little pretty, pretty light when I say the two of us that have three Purple Hearts, we missed that class on ducking. So with that being said, today is a great day, not only to become a Purple Heart City, but also to celebrate the inauguration of your first meeting in this building. And I have to say, this is one awesome facility. You have to be proud of yourselves for putting all of this together. And so, on behalf of the Military Order of the Purple Heart Honor Guard, we say thank you for allowing us to be here with you tonight. It is our pleasure and honor to be here. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call the mayor, if she would step forward. There's a proclamation that goes, that officiates and symbolizes the essence of becoming a Purple Heart City. And we have been doing this for quite a while, and it is very important that we do this part today. Madam Mayor?
First gentleman, I'd like to thank all of you for your service. You all received your Purple Hearts in Vietnam, and our country is eternally grateful. The proclamation reads as, whereas the city of Dublin, Ohio, and Dublin residents have a great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have and are selflessly serving their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who have and are serving in the United States military have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart chartered by an act of Congress is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, to promote patriotism, to support relative legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to ensure that we never forget the sacrifices made by those so decorated. And whereas the city of Dublin has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including Purple Heart recipients, and appreciates the sacrifice our Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, and believe that it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, I, Chris Amrose Grooms, Mayor of the city of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the city of Dublin a Purple Heart City honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform, wounded or killed while serving to protect the United States of America, to be celebrated on July 26th, 2021, and hereby further proclaim August 7th of each year to be Purple Heart Day in the city of Dublin, signed this 26th day of July 2021.
Absolutely. ...that we make to the mayor, on behalf of the Military Order of the Purple Heart Honor Guard, and for the community. This plaque represents the official, along with the officiality, along with the proclamation that designates all of you as a Purple Heart City. And what that means is, if that shows, and if you see this sign right over here, those are the signs that you will see along the road, that when people enter the city of Dublin or exit the city of Dublin, they will see that Purple Heart sign. And what that tells them is that Dublin is a veteran-friendly community. And I've felt that ever since we've been here. A couple of us have been here since Friday. And, but I tell you what, it is so nice to be up here. The people are friendly, and I can see that all here. So I want to present this plaque not only to the mayor, but to you. This plaque reads as follows. "The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to the city of Dublin, Ohio, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans, becoming a Purple Heart City. Presented by the patriot members of the Department of Ohio Military Order of the Purple Heart, United States of America." And I'm sure the mayor will find the appropriate place to display this.
We have a couple of blank walls in this building. I think we'll find a home for it. So thank you very much.
You are so welcome. Thank you. Now, we have one little part of our Purple Heart Ceremony. There's this thing called challenge coins, and a lot of you military folks know what I'm talking about. The challenge coin started a long time ago, and what it was is like if you had a patch for the unit that you served in, if you had an emblem that said you served in that uniform or in that particular branch of the service, that when you went to the bar, you would flop your coin down, and whoever was there that did not have their coin had to buy everybody a drink. So that's where it started, but it has grown into something a little bit different. It's an honor to have these coins, and what I'm going to show you here is the one that we're going to present, not only to the mayor, but to all of city council and the chief of police and the managers. We're going to present that today. So this coin represents our dedication to you guys for allowing us to be here and thanking you for the service that you have rendered, and thank you for honoring us for our service. Thank you very much.
Detail. Present. Coins.
Hey, how did you get the pictures on your screen? I know this is getting locked. It's word pad. I'm getting obsessed. I can't get word pad.
Right face. Hoop. There's a letter here. Marshal Grant. Hoop. Right face. Hoop. Prepare to move up. Hoop. Ready. Retreat. Detail. Left face. Hoop. Ladies and gentlemen, we will ask for your donations after Sean Clifton speaks. And half step. Forward. Hoop. There. 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 I will salute my duty. I will salute my duty. I will salute my duty. I will salute my duty.
Go shoot for it. Get the screen on, and it's blocking word pad.
There. 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 There.
At this time, we would like to ask our very own Sean Clifton, Southern Ohio native who has lived in Dublin for more than 20 years, retired as a master sergeant in 2016 after 22 years in the Army. Over the course of his military career, he was a Green Beret and a member of the U.S. Army Special Forces. He was deployed to Iraq in 2005 and 2006, and Afghanistan in 2008 and 2009. He received the Purple Heart after his combat injury. Sean served as Dublin's Fourth of July Grand Marshal in 2018. Sean gives great deal of credit to his family, who were by his side the whole time. He and his wife Sarah have three sons, now ages 11, 9, and 6, and we are happy that you are all joining with us here this evening. So please.
Well, thank you so much, and they're a little bit older than that now. That bio might be a few years old, but...
I was going to say, he was really tall for 11.
Whatever you guys are putting in the Dublin water towers are working out just, just fine. And I better see some of those coins in the bars later tonight from you guys who are hanging out afterwards, but thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, members of city council, for your support over the past few months. Thanks to fellow members of the Dublin Veterans Advisory Committee who are here today. If I could have the Dublin Veterans Advisory Committee members stand and be recognized, please? Thank you, gentlemen. And special thanks to the Military Order of the Purple Heart. You guys rocked that. That was absolutely amazing, and I hope my family was able to embrace just a short moment of, of the military life, but thank you so much for that presentation. And special thanks to city manager and retired General Dana McDaniel, council member Christina Aludo for helping out. Let me throw a disclaimer out real quick, okay? I'm a, I'm a passionate guy. Passionate guy. I work hard at what I do, and I, I try my best at everything that I do, and, and this passion breaks through into tears sometimes, so it's a, it's just my excuse to be a big crybaby while I'm up here sharing a few personal thoughts. Another special thank you to Mr. Randy Howson, who, who mentored me in this entire process of going, of getting our, our city recognized. Randy is a Vietnam veteran and a Purple Heart Medal recipient, and I thank you, Randy, for, for your support over this. And even more special thanks to my wife Sarah that's here, and my three boys, Stone, Seth, and Scotty. And I also have some extended family here today accompanying the first couple of rows, so thank you guys for coming out. I also have a Green Beret buddy in here that I don't normally like to have my back to crowds, so Kevin, hopefully you have my back, bro. So my name is Sean Clifton, retired Army Combat Veteran of Iraq and Afghanistan, Dublin resident for more than 20 years, and a Purple Heart Medal recipient. 12 years ago, in the spring of 2009, I was critically wounded while conducting a raid on a Taliban and Al Qaeda target. Upon entering that target building, I was shot multiple times by enemy fighters. As I lay bleeding out on the battlefield in Afghanistan, I never thought I'd see my family or the city of Dublin again. Fast forward 10 years, the Dublin Veterans Advisory Committee was reformed, and with the blessing of Dana McDaniel, I was able to represent the Army as a Dublin veteran. I knew right away that my personal project would be to honor the Purple Heart Medal and have our city recognized as a Purple Heart City. So here we are, July 26th, 2021. July 26th, right? Is it a special day? I believe it is. It's the inaugural day of, of council chambers. We, we discussed how beautiful this is, but it's also a very special day for me personally and for my family. Today is my mom's birthday. Happy birthday, Mom. She was the... And also on July 26th in 2009, just a few short months after my near fatal combat injury and after several surgeries, I was temporarily released from Walter Reed Hospital in Washington, DC. And I was released on July 26th to come home to continue my recovery, surgery, and therapy right here in Dublin. So although this day doesn't seem like much, it absolutely worked out perfect for me personally and for my family, and I appreciate all of the support. It's a very special day and an anniversary of sorts. After my near fatal combat injury in 2009, I fought every day. I fought every week and every month to survive. After more than two years of perseverance, as well as love and teamwork from friends and family, I can tell you I went from simply surviving to thriving. And as a survivor, and now a thriver, the grass is greener, the sky is bluer, and today, today it's a little more purple. The Purple Heart City designation is part of a much larger Purple Heart Trail network that spans not only Ohio, but the entire country, linking interstates, highways, villages, and townships. This designation is important not only for me, but also for my family, as it embodies service, sacrifice, teamwork, perseverance, and perhaps going above and beyond the call of duty. And for me personally, it's a bit of a welcome home sign. When I see that sign that was just shown today, and I see that entering or leaving the city of Dublin, it will remind me that I'm home, I'm safe with family and community, something that all veterans need. The city of Dublin will continue to honor our veterans, combat veterans, and combat wounded veterans as a Purple Heart City. And just a personal note, I'm looking forward to that bridge being lit up purple. I don't know if that's happening tonight, but the rumor is it's definitely going to happen on August 7th. So meet me there, and don't bring your coins. Okay? So Purple Heart City, from a small idea, a mission perhaps, presented to the Veterans Committee to further celebrate and honor our local veterans, we come to fruition today to celebrate birthdays, community, teamwork, new council chambers, veterans, and heroes. And let us never forget our combat wounded veterans and those that were not able to make it home. Let us honor and celebrate their sacrifice, their ultimate sacrifice on this very special day. And although this particular mission is complete, our mission, our mission, in the greater sense of continued service to others, our mission continues. Thank you.
Please remain standing. Okay, we will open it up for citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda. Public comment is still being accepted online. Our communications and public information staff will read any comments received into the record. I have had some folks sign up, but want to initially ask, is there anyone that did not have opportunity that wishes to speak publicly this evening on an item not on this agenda? Hearing no other, I will call Bobby Weston of 3247 Rossberry Court. If you could please, welcome, and state your name and address into the record.
So again, my name is Robert Weston, Bobby Weston, and I reside at 3247 Rossberry Court here in Dublin. So, good evening. So, again, I said, my name is Robert Weston. I am the founding member of Rainbow Dublin, and we are Dublin City's first, and we are Dublin City's only LGTB advocacy group. I am aware that in June of 2020, Officer McClousky and Planner Rayburn were appointed as LGTB liaisons for the city of Dublin with a very specific responsibilities, but one of which is, one of which is meeting with business owners, community groups, and individuals of the LGTB community to identify unique needs and solicit feedback for relevant laws, policies, and services. As the only LGTB group leader, I can tell you that the three of us have spoken, and all three of us agree that we need a non-discrimination order. The LGTB community itself is vulnerable. Today, in most of Ohio, and specifically Dublin, right here, right now, myself and my friends can be fired simply for not being straight. When Dublin City Council passed a resolution a few years back supporting the Ohio Fairness Act, nothing has been done since, and anyone who knows anything about law knows that a resolution does not stand up in court. A resolution is talk. It's not action. Furthermore, I would like to take this time and invite every single member of city council and the rest of the city in Dublin to Dublin's, Rainbow Dub, and to become annual coming out party on August 8th, as we celebrate the diversity and the support within our community that is available to everyone. that is available to everyone here as part of my community, and then to share my community with everyone else. Rainbow Dublin's number one goal is to work with City Council to craft a non-discrimination ordinance, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Thank you again for taking the time to listen to me and now the rest of the members of Rainbow Dublin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Next, we have Margie Hoak. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address into the record.
My name is Esmary Hawk, 4237 Clayton Court. I'm here as an ally to support Rainbow Dublin on their ask for a non-discrimination ordinance. With a non-discrimination ordinance in Dublin, we would be sending a necessary message that this is a safe and equitable community. It would bring Dublin in line with our neighboring communities who've already passed this ordinance, such as Bexley, Columbus, Upper Arlington, Hilliard. There's actually 33. There's just some. Worthington, Westerville being a couple more. As Dublin is growing exponentially, it is of utmost importance that we continue to invest in Dublin and the families want to continue to live here and that businesses want to continue to stay here. As the city manager stated today, that this beautiful building was part of the evolution of the city. This is part of the societal evolution as well. And as the mayor stated today, that you're home and you are welcomed here. This is part of making everyone feel like they're home and they're welcomed here, and I want everyone to feel safe and welcomed here as well. So I urge you to consider passing a non-discrimination ordinance that will be recommended.
... heterosexual adults to experience a mental health condition and nearly twice as likely to have a substance abuse disorder, as they often use this as a self-medication or a way of coping. Those who identify as transgender are nearly four times as likely to experience a mental health condition and are almost four times as likely to have a substance abuse disorder. Why? They feel unloved, they feel unaccepted, and discriminated against. LGBTQ+ are also one of the most targeted communities by perpetrators of hate crimes in our country. A national 2009 school, I want to emphasize this, this is a school survey, these are our children, reported that 85% of LGBTQ+ youth reported being harassed or assaulted at school. 85% of them. As an ally, I find this heartbreaking. My heart sank even lower when I did research and learned that students in high school who identify as lesbian, gay, or bisexual are four times as likely to commit suicide than a heterosexual peer. Why am I focusing on mental health in regards to an NDO? I love Dublin. I moved here for the opportunities that it provided for myself as well as for my two children, who are both heterosexual. And I'm pretty sure many of you can relate to that, but many of the adolescents that I work with are suffering from anxiety, depression, substance abuse addiction, and suicidal ideation. They have shared with me that they feel less than, unaccepted, and unworthy. They are scared to tell their parents because their parents will be disappointed in them, or what if their parents' friends find out? Why? It's because they simply identify as LGBTQ+. Without change, I believe that they will take their talent, their skills, their passion, and their creativity to more accepting cities, where they can live and work in an environment that protects their right to employment, have housing, and community opportunities. Harvest Business Review stated that as younger people enter the workforce, they will be expecting work environments designed to help LGBTQ+ people thrive, and they will choose where to work accordingly. As equality in the workplace plays a more crucial role in our society right now when attracting and retaining skilled employees, now is the perfect time for us to be having this discussion about how to improve acceptance and the workplace culture here in our city. The percentage of Fortune 500 companies with policies protecting LGBTQ+ discrimination grew from 4% in 1996 to now over 91% in 2019. It's gone higher since then. Gender identification discrimination policies in these companies grew from 3% in 2002 to 83% in 2019. I'd like to respectfully ask you, members of Dublin City Council, to help us join those companies and our neighboring communities in doing what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Smith. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address into the record.
Good evening. I am Brian Smith, and I live at 6683 Forensa Place here in Dublin. We just moved here about a year and a half ago and love it. Very retiring here. I'm a father of a non-binary adult. I am also a member of PFLAG and an ally for the LGBTQ+ community. You know, in order to make Dublin the best community to live and work, it needs to have everyone to live their authentic lives. What's an authentic life? Not hiding who you are, who you love. Do the things that make you you. It is easy for me, a white cis straight guy, to be authentic, but the LGBTQ+ persons cannot always do that. Bigotry, fear, prejudice, and ignorance from institutions, corporations, and individuals shut them out, making them less of a member, less of a person, not their full selves. I, I see that far too often in our PFLAG meetings and observations in my direct interactions. This is where the non-discrimination ordinance from the city of Dublin becomes a powerful ally. This tells the LGBTQ+ persons, Dublin hears you. We are taking action to level the playing field in work, housing, and services. Plus, they were also welcoming to enjoy the fabulous amenities that we have here in Dublin, including the Bridge Park area and a beautiful Dublin link. An NDO is also a great way to attract new high-tech and other businesses. They are always looking for inclusive community for their workers to live. I personally would love to have my non-binary family member who works in a very high-tech, cutting-edge industry to move here. It would be really great. So I asked City Council to approve this NDO and to prove that we are forward-thinking and doing. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Jaron Terry. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address into the record.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Jaren.
Excuse me.
It always happens. Jaren Terry, residing at 6683 Forensa. I'm addressing you tonight as the mother of a member of the LGBTQ+ community and as president of the Board of Directors of PFLAG Columbus and as a veteran. I have to add that tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you.
PFLAG is a national organization founded in 1972 through one mother's love for her gay son. The PFLAG Columbus chapter provides education, support, and advocacy to parents, friends, and family of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer persons, as well as LGBTQ+ people themselves throughout central Ohio. I'm here to voice my and PFLAG's support for the city of Dublin to put in place a non-discrimination ordinance to provide LGBTQ+ persons living in, working, and visiting Dublin the type of protections other citizens already enjoy. I believe, and PFLAG believes, that LGBTQ+ individuals should be included among the protected classes who are currently protected from discrimination and/or harassment under all federal, state, and local laws throughout the United States. However, because neither federal nor Ohio laws currently include our LGBTQ citizens, it's imperative that local municipalities provide those protections. Simply stated, we are not asking for special or new protections, but we are asking that the city of Dublin pass an NDO that meets or exceeds the criteria and standards spelled out by Equality Ohio. I commend you for your work thus far, including designating two stellar individuals as liaisons to the city manager and the Dublin Police Department regarding LGBTQ+ issues. And I applaud the city on the formation of two task forces, which I understand are also in favor of and recommending an NDO. In addition, your efforts to increase the city's score on the Human Rights Campaign's HRC Municipal Equality Index are admirable, but as you know, have fallen short. Since Dublin was first included in 2016, the score has sadly hovered from 31 to 40-something out of a possible 100 points, which as you know is far below how well we all want to see Dublin reflected among other forward-thinking cities. Having an effective NDO would go a long way toward improving the city's score. And although I was delighted to receive this postcard from you, it's my fervent hope that we don't have to wait until 2035 to have an NDO, which would greatly improve the quality of life for all Dublin residents, in particular our young persons of all gender identities, sexual orientations, and gender expressions. I hope you have a mechanism for hearing from the younger generations who, according to a recent survey by the Trevor Project, overwhelmingly support equality for all. And I stand ready to help in any way I or PFLAG Columbus can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Angela Penny. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address into the record.
Sure. Thank you. It's Angela Penny at 5329 Ross Common Road. If I may take a moment, our daughter is watching and super excited to see us on camera, so hello Sophia. So I am a parent and a grandparent here in Dublin. Also, apparently going to get a little emotional. I use she/her pronouns. Hopefully, that's terminology that you're familiar with or that will become more familiar and that we'll also begin using so folks know how to refer to us as well. I love Dublin. Our family... Our family also loves Dublin. So excited to see the evolution that Dublin is kind of coming about. I've been here for 25 years, since I came to go to college. Personally or professionally, I'm in technology, so I'm a software developer turned architect and leader. The stuff that we're doing with the Smart City, and I'm a huge fan of Doug McColl, the CIO. We're doing great work there, but in the area of diversity and inclusion, I think we're really falling short of what technology organizations are going to expect of this city. I know we're trying to recruit, you know, more companies to come here. They have, you know, associates and employees who have high expectations of what a city offers to them, and having inclusive policies as a city as well as a welcoming community is going to be a requirement for us to attract the kind of talent that I think that we need here and the kind of companies that hire those kinds of folks. So, as I mentioned, we love the city. We've really been engaging in all of the offerings the city has related around multicultural events. We're super excited for the Irish Festival. We participated in the Unity March, which was lovely, and we had such a turnout from our young people here in Dublin who, I know, we're not really representing those young folks who maybe this isn't the highlight of their time at a city council meeting, but we really do need to make this a place that they want to stay or return after college and invest and have homes. And so I urge you, please, to approve when it comes in front of you, the non-discrimination ordinance. Apologies for my emotional impulse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Haynes. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address into the record.
Thank you. My name is Michael Haynes. I live at 5329 Ross Common, and I use he and him pronouns. And I'd like to start by thanking the mayor and the vice mayor and council for the opportunity to address you this evening. And I'm coming here as a Dublin resident and as a Dublin parent to encourage City Council to adopt a non-discrimination ordinance for our community. As my wife just said, we very much enjoy living here with our family. There are really great public spaces, there are tons of fun events, and there are lots of small businesses that we really enjoy having the ability to visit and provide business to. And when we're in those places, we don't have to worry about whether we will be accepted or welcomed. And I believe that it's very important that everyone who comes to Dublin should be able to feel that same sense of comfort in those places. And as a result, I believe that it's vital that Dublin in its city code say clearly that discrimination on a wide variety of bases, including sexual orientation and gender identity and expression, is not only illegal but also unwelcome. The highest purpose that a community can have is to protect the most vulnerable people. And with that in mind, I believe that if we're adopting a non-discrimination ordinance, as many of our neighboring communities have done, that that can be a necessary step to providing protection to those who might otherwise face discrimination and have no legal recourse. And it's an important statement to those who might feel currently as if they're unsure about their place in our community, that they are valued and that they are welcome. So with all that in mind, I would like to urge council to adopt a broad non-discrimination ordinance for the benefit of our community. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Peggy Kilty. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address into the record.
Good evening. I am Peggy Kilty. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I reside at 7568 Ashlard Court here in Dublin, Ohio. My family, my husband Ken, my two children, and myself, we live across the street from the North Pool, and we are thoroughly enjoying the renovations there on a day like today. So thank you. And I am thoroughly enjoying the renovations here in this building. This is incredible. I'm excited to be with, be here with you all this evening to celebrate and view these amazing additions to the City Council Chamber. While I have viewed many council meetings on Zoom, this is my first in-person meeting, and I look forward to attending more right here, hopefully with our, much of our community engagement. This is an inviting and impressive facility, and thank you for having all of us here today to enjoy it with you. And I'd also like to thank all of you for, for, I'd like to thank the city of Dublin and the Dublin Police Department, Chief Paez, for welcoming and recognizing our LGBTQ community this past June with the lighting of the Link Pedestrian Bridge, and for working with the local nonprofit group, Rainbow Dublin, to support a Unity Pride Walk. The Pride Walk, like this new chamber, was impressive and inviting. It was welcoming. It was well-attended, family-friendly, and wonderfully affirming to the LGBTQ community members of all ages who reside in this city, including my two children. It was an especially affirming and positive experience for my LGBTQ teenager and their friends, who felt welcomed, accepted, and they felt a sense of belonging here in Dublin that they haven't... that they haven't felt before, many of them for the first time. I cannot stress the importance of that love and acceptance, the impact it has on the mental health and well-being of our children. I hope the celebration of pride will become a tradition that will continue and grow into a local Dublin community pride celebration, similar to the events hosted by many of our neighbors, such as Worthington, Westerville, Murraysville, Upper Arlington, Hilliard. It's an extensive list of community pride celebrations, and Dublin should be on it and be proud to be on it. Another list I would love to see Dublin on is the list of cities in Ohio that have adopted municipal ordinances to establish protections against discrimination. That list has already grown, thanks to Upper Arlington and Hilliard, who have both recently adopted nondiscrimination ordinances since I last addressed this topic in letters that I have written to city council and to the community task force this past April. And once again, I respectfully ask the City of Dublin to consider an LGBTQ-inclusive nondiscrimination ordinance. I want my community to be a safe, inviting, inclusive community for everyone, whether they work, live, pray, or play here in Dublin, Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Susan Swit. I hope that I pronounced that correctly. Welcome. If you could please state your name and address into the record.
Sue Swite. I live at 7356 Tallymore Drive, Dublin, Ohio. I've lived there since 1994. I'm a longtime resident, and I'm here on behalf of myself as a resident. And I really want to thank all the community members and the veterans who are today and the staff who are veterans for their service to our community and our country. We're very grateful. So we live in a community where property tax is just a minor support to our city budget. And I just want to underline the previous comments on economic development. I think corporations want to move to a community that protects their employees and that attracts creatives and young professionals. And corporations are kind of drawn to communities where employee rights are protected. They don't want to have to worry that an employee is not going to be able to come in to work the next day because they don't have a problem with their housing. They want to find a community where their employees are supported. And I feel like through our inaction, we're putting our economic development staff in a position to compete against communities who haven't acted nondiscrimination ordinances and equitable policies. Westerville, Bexley, Columbus, now Upper Arlington, there's a lot of attraction to other cities, and we need to be able to compete. Last meeting, I sat at home folding laundry, watching city council meetings, as I do. And I was listening to discussion on painting a green stripe on the bridge and painting in Dublin in green, which is a great idea. They said, you know, it's going to bring us more attention, and CEOs are going to drive by and see Dublin, and they're going to bring their businesses here. And it's a great fine detail, but I think there's some low-hanging fruit we're missing. And I respectfully ask Dublin members to spend some time on a more data-driven decision, that findings at communities that do focus on equity actually do bring in more corporate citizens. And so I just want to ask, let's invest in equitable policies for our future in Dublin. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else present this evening that would like to speak to items that are not on this evening's agenda? Okay, hearing none. I do want to thank you all for coming tonight and for sharing with us your thoughts. We certainly hear you and appreciate your time here. As many of you alluded to, and I think maybe perhaps you all know that our community task force and the chief's advisory committee have taken up this subject. And we're really proud of the work that they've done, and we're really proud that they have represented us so well in having difficult conversations or conversations regarding difficult topics. We are looking forward to seeing their final report. We understand that it has been completed. I don't know that it has been assembled in a report format. I believe that we anticipate seeing that at some point in August. And we will begin that conversation in its entirety once they have their recommendations. But we certainly appreciate hearing your thoughts this evening, and we will couple those with the report that we received from that body, and we will continue this discussion at that point in time. So thank you very much for coming and sharing your passions. We certainly do appreciate that. I would like to ask if we had received any public comment via the web this evening. Great, thank you. Okay. If you would like to excuse yourself, we will pause for a moment, but you're certainly welcome to stay for the balance of this certainly exhilarating and thrilling council meeting and the business at hand. Okay. We do have a consent agenda this evening. Is there a request to remove these items from the consent agenda? And it consists of the approval of the meeting minutes of June 28th and a notice to a legislative authority for a request for a new C2 liquor permit. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. And is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeRosa. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
I'm going to wait for that to come down. Ah, there we go. See, you learn all kinds of new things in your first day in your new chamber. Like, it's going to be really noisy when the screen comes down. File that away. Okay. We will move on to second reading, public hearing ordinances. Ordinance 26-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an easement along Riverside Drive with American Electric Power for the installation of underground electric facilities.
Okay. Look, I don't even have to look on my screen for you. Isn't that glorious? I just come over here and I get to see the shining face of Paul Hammersmith, so...
Good evening, members of council. It's wonderful to be back and all together again, and especially in these new chambers. So we're looking forward to it. As presented at the first reading, this easement will allow American Electric Power, AEP, to fill an identified gap in their facilities in the Bridge Street District along Riverside Drive to manage and effectively provide consistent electric service to the area and provide supplemental electric service to Riverside Crossing Park. The only new information to be provided this evening is in response to council members' questions regarding the proposed screening and size of the AEP facilities. The screening plan was provided in the staff report. Council will note screening is not directly provided between the AEP facilities and Riverside Drive in order to not restrict access to the facilities nor restrict motor site visibility along Riverside Drive. The city will be responsible for the installation of the proposed screening and will do so after the AEP facilities are installed. Lastly, the ground-mounted switch will be located within a rectangular steel enclosure, approximately five feet deep by 10 feet wide by four feet tall, and will be dark green in color. Staff recommends council adopt this ordinance granting the requested easement to AEP at no cost, as the installation is a benefit to the city by enhancing the electric service to Riverside Crossing Park. I'll be glad to answer any questions from council.
Questions from council? Paul, my apologies, I was not here at our last meeting. Was it contemplated that these would be placed in a vault?
It was, but they do not like to put switches in vaults, and these are truly switches. And they would like those to be pad-mounted. But we did have that conversation.
Very good. Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 27-21 through 29-21 together. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Saludo. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ordinance 27-21. Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire certain property located at 7348 Riverside Drive, identified as Franklin County Parcel Number 27300838700 from Chad R. Guyer and Jennifer M. Guyer, husband and wife, for the public purpose of constructing a new water line, extension, and a shared-use path, which shall be open to the public without charge. Ordinance 2821 regarding the property located at 7300 Riverside Drive from Joseph E. Curran and Beth K. Curran, husband and wife. Ordinance 2921 regarding the property located at 7394 Riverside Drive from John F. Dune.
Very good. Okay. And Paul's going to have our staff report on this as well.
Unfortunately, you're going to get to see a lot of me this evening. So as previously presented at the first reading, this project will provide a shared-use path along the east side of Riverside Drive from Emerald Parkway to 500 feet north of Hannah Hills Drive, and will extend a water line on the east side of Riverside Drive from Emerald Parkway to Hannah Hills Drive that is intended to serve 13 existing parcels. The only new information to provide this evening is in response to council member questions regarding the plans for pedestrian access to the west side of Riverside Drive once this first section of shared-use path is complete. The currently adopted five-year capital improvements program does include $465,000 programmed in 2024 for the design and construction of approximately 950 feet of eight-foot asphalt shared-use path on the west side of Riverside Drive between Emerald Parkway and the Dublin Arts Center at 7125 Riverside Drive. Regarding any at-grade pedestrian crossing of Riverside Drive, given the character of Riverside Drive in this area and the current speed limit, staff would not recommend any at-grade pedestrian crossing unless it were to occur at a signalized intersection such as Emerald Parkway or Hard Road. Staff recommends council adopt these ordinances, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance and contract documents to formally accept the necessary property interest from these three property owners as described in the staff report. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
The second thing I'm learning is that my button goes off after a certain period of time. So I'll try to stay on that. Council questions and discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, call the roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 30-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate transfer agreement for certain city-owned property on Crosby Court and certain property owned by Tuttle Emerald LLC on Parkwood Place, and authorizing the execution of related agreements and documents.
And Colleen Gilger, there she is, has our staff report this evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. This has no changes since first reading, but I will reiterate, this is a land swap where the city would gain a 16-acre parcel on Parkwood Place in exchange for trading a 9.3-acre parcel of land at Crosby Court. It would also result in a speculative flex building being constructed out at Crosby Court by Van Trust Real Estate. This is a building type where our inventory is critically low and highly desired. So tonight, we do have Bryce Harrison, who is the manager of real estate with Van Trust. We can welcome him to the podium if you have any additional questions or comments for him regarding this legislation.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments from council?
I'll just reiterate, Colleen, that I think it was a very innovative way to approach this and appreciate staff's and partnership work on this. Thank you.
Okay, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 31-21.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $19,750,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of refunding bonds previously issued by the city for the purposes of paying the costs of various public infrastructure projects.
And welcome. Rosa Oakletree has our staff report this evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of bonds totally $19.75 million for the purpose of refinancing existing debt to reduce the city's future interest costs. There's no additional information to report from its first hearing. Attached to your packet is a repayment schedule as requested during the previous meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Council questions, discussion?
Yes, Rosa, thanks very much. I asked for the schedule. I think that was very helpful. I appreciate that. I had just a couple of quick questions. So the retirement of the bonds and the reissuing, are these the same terms in duration? It appeared that way on the schedule.
Yeah, we're retiring some of the pool. They intend to keep the same repayment schedule and not to extend.
Okay, so you're just... The refinancing would keep the same terms?
Correct.
And what was the total cost of the refinance? Do we have that number somewhere? I didn't recollect seeing that. Or are the numbers that we're seeing net?
The total savings include the cost of the refinancing.
Okay, very good. That's $1.9 million. That's a good savings. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work on that.
Did the savings numbers include the cost of the reissuance of the debt itself as well?
Correct.
It did. The finance cost. Great, thank you. Any other questions from council, comments? Okay. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 32-21. Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $1.5 million for the purpose of paying the costs of improving the municipal sanitary sewer system by extending certain sewer lines, repairing and lining certain existing sewer lines, and installing associated manholes and service laterals, together with all incidental work and related occurrences thereto.
Thank you. And we'll stay with Rosa for our staff report.
Hello again. So no changes have been made to this ordinance. The staff recommends approval at tonight's meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? So for this, we're talking about extending the sewer lines, and is that simply due to us holding on some of the water lines due to the issues that we have discovered with the City of Columbus and their Department of Water?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further? Hearing none. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
That brings us to introduction, first reading, public hearing ordinances. Ordinance 33-21.
To authorize the establishment of the local fiscal recovery special revenue fund.
I'll add a second. Thank you, Ms. Saludo. And I will stick with Rosa. You just got the corner over there.
Yes. Staff is seeking authorization to create the local fiscal recovery special revenue fund in preparation for the $5.1 million that is expected to be distributed to the city as part of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Staff recommends city council approval of this ordinance at the second reading and public hearing on August 16.
Great, thank you. Council questions, discussion?
I just had a quick question. So we established a fund for previous acceptance, so it is required that we have to establish an addition or secondary fund for each of these?
That is correct. And also here with us is Jerry O'Brien, our chief accountant, if you have any specific questions about the requirements for the fund, he'll be happy to answer those.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do you anticipate another necessity for another one of these funds, or the two that we will have will cover?
Not that I'm aware. Yeah, sorry.
Any further questions from council? Hearing none. We will look forward to hearing second reading and public hearing on August 16. Thank you for that. Ordinance 34-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contract to acquire a 0.040-acre temporary construction easement and a second 0.069-acre temporary construction easement from Mount Carmel Health System, an Ohio nonprofit corporation located at 6594 Leggett Road for the public purpose of improving the interchange, which shall be open to the public without charge.
I'll add a second. Thank you, Ms. Saludo. And Paul will return with our staff report. Welcome.
The City of Dublin is working cooperatively with project partners at the Ohio Department of Transportation. of Transportation, Union County, to improve the interchange at US 33, State Route 161 and Post Road. The project is located at the existing 33161 Post Road interchange, providing access to the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center outpatient care facility currently under construction along the north side of University Boulevard. The detailed design, environmental updates, and the right-of-way acquisition are on schedule to be completed in 2021. The current project's schedule requires the final plan package to be submitted to ODOT in early October of this year. The project is anticipated to bid in February 2022 with an award in mid-March and construction to start in May 2022. In order to meet this schedule, the plans are on schedule to be finalized no later than this coming August. The city, through its acquisition agent, has recently come to mutually agreeable terms with two property owners in connection with this project. The first is Mount Carmel Healthcare System. The property is located on the north side of US 33, east of Liggett Road, south of Perimeter Drive, at 6594 Liggett Road. The city participated in good-faith discussions resulting in mutually agreeable terms for the acquisition of the property interest for the appraised value of $5,450. On your screens, you'll see the two temporary easements needed from Mount Carmel Healthcare Second, Dennis J. Hofer. The property is located on the west side of Liggett Road, east of US 33, at 6611 Liggett Road. The city participated in good-faith discussions resulting in mutually agreeable terms for the acquisition of the entire parcel for the appraised value, which is $704,000. This value includes the limited access right-of-way and the remaining parcel. The limited access right-of-way will be transferred to ODOT. Ordinances 34-21 and 35-21 authorize the city manager to execute and accept on behalf of the city all necessary conveyance documents to formally acquire the necessary property interest from each property owner. Staff recommends adoption of these two ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on August 16th of this year. I'll be glad to answer any questions from council.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion?
So, Paul, what is the building used for that's on this parcel, this purchase?
I believe it's currently a car or automotive detailing shop.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? And Paul, once we would acquire this entire parcel, would that likely be a redevelopment?
Yes, that would be our intent, is to work to combine this property with adjacent properties for the redevelopment of the entire area.
Very good. Okay, we will hear that second reading, public hearing, August 16th, which brings us to ordinance 35-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contract to acquire a 0.412 acre fee simple warranty deed for limited access right-of-way and a 1.597 acre parcel from the property located at 6611 Liggett Road, Dublin, Ohio 43016 in its entirety, from Dennis J. Hofer, for the public purposes of improving the interchange which shall be open to the public without charge.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Paul, would you care to give the follow-up on this?
Yeah, actually it would be the same staff report, and I apologize, I was thinking that you combined these into one ordinance, so yes, this would be the Hofer property that I previously described in the acquisition of that entire parcel.
Thank you. Any other questions, further questions from council, discussion? Okay, we will look forward to hearing that on August 16th as well. Ordinance 36-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for and accept a 0.172 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way, 0.080 acre, which is present road occupied without limitation of existing access rights from McKittrick Properties, Inc., from the property located at 3865 Bright Road, for the public purpose of constructing a new water line extension and other public improvements.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. And Paul?
These I'll make sure to do separately. The Bright Road 12-inch water main extension project will complete a water main connection between Emerald Parkway and Bright Road Roundabout and an existing 12-inch main at the villages of Inverness. Acquisition of property interest from two property owners along Bright Road is necessary to install the new public water main. The first acquisition is from the McKittrick Properties Incorporated. The city has participated in good-faith discussions with the property owner and has arrived at mutually agreeable terms with them. The current schedule is to advertise this project for bid in late 2021 with construction activities expected to commence in early 2022. This ordinance authorizes the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documents and contracts to formally acquire the necessary property interest. Staff recommends council adopt this ordinance at the second reading and public hearing on August 16th. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Jane?
I just have a question. Are there sewer lines throughout the same area that these water lines are being extended to?
It's nearby, but it's not currently adjacent to these properties.
So these properties don't have sewer, don't have city sewer?
Yeah, and this is really purely a system improvement to make a looped connection for reliability of our water system in this area. Certainly it'll provide water access for these adjacent properties, but really the primary purpose is really a system improvement itself.
When are the, do you know about when they're scheduled to realize sewer?
I would have to go back and look at that schedule for extension.
And we don't normally do sewer and water together. In most cases, do we normally do sewer and water together?
We would typically do that, yes, but in this case, we were really focused on getting the water system improvement itself.
Okay.
And providing that redundancy, because what we were realizing with the City of Columbus is this area lacked redundancy, so if we lost one section of water main, we would have a large outage in this area.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
The sewer would likely come with development, correct?
That's the expectation.
Typical form.
Yes.
Any other questions from council and discussion? Hearing none, we will look forward to second reading, public hearing on August 16th. Brings us to ordinance 37-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for and accept a 0.025 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation of existing access rights from Stephen T. Newcombe from the property located at 3985 Bright Road for the public purpose of constructing a new water line extension and other public improvements.
I'll introduce it. Thank you.
Really the same comments as on the previous ordinance. I will point out on the exhibit on your screen that the blue highlighted area, the 2WD, is the McKittrick acquisition we spoke of previously, and then in the pink is 1WD, which is the acquisition from Mr. Newcombe. Again, the city has participated in good-faith discussions with this property owner and has arrived at mutually agreeable terms for the acquisition. This ordinance, again, will authorize the city manager to execute conveyance documents to formally acquire the necessary property interest, and again, we would recommend adoption at the second reading on August 16th.
Any further questions, discussion from council? Again, we will have second reading, public hearing on August 16th. Make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 38-21 and 41-21 together, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Emros Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 38-21.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire certain property located at 7304 Riverside Drive, identified as Franklin County Parcel Number 27300868200 from Bruce E. Temple and Kitty L. Temple, husband and wife, for the public purpose of constructing a new water line extension and shared use path which shall be open to the public without charge. Ordinance 3921 regarding the property located at 7322 Riverside Drive from John P. Dematio and Marlene G. Dematio, husband and wife. Ordinance 40-21, property located at 7402 Riverside Drive from Courtney L. Hoggan and Joseph C. Hoggan. And ordinance 4121 regarding the property located at 7364 Riverside Drive from the estate of Donald Toodle, also known as Donald Ocho Toodle.
I'll introduce them all. Thank you. And Paul, we'll stick with you for the staff report.
Well, members of council, these four acquisitions, similar to the prior three with ordinances 27-21 through 29-21, are again for the Riverside Drive East Shared Use Path Section 1. These are four additional properties that we have come to mutually agreeable terms after good-faith discussions with the property owners for these necessary property interests. We continue to have good-faith discussions with the remaining property owners and hope to arrive at agreeable terms with them by the end of September. There are a total of 11 properties along Riverside Drive where it is necessary to have acquisitions to construct this path. As you may remember, and I think I reported previously, the current schedule is to advertise the project for bid late this year, and then construction activities are expected to start in early 2022, once these acquisitions are complete. Once again, we would recommend the adoption of these four ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on August 16th. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Council questions, discussion? Paul, is there any intent to try to have a portion of the shared use path on the opposite side or on the west side of Riverside Drive as well?
That's the project I spoke of previously that's currently programmed for 2024 between Emerald Parkway and the Dublin Arts Center, so you may be discussing that at your updated CIP. That's where there was $465,000 currently programmed for that.
And is that contemplated to continue all the way to Soata Park?
We had looked at that alignment previously, there are not any additions programmed at this time to go further north.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will hear second reading, public hearing on August 16th on those as well. It brings us to ordinance 42-21.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Andelen Biosciences, Inc., to lease a facility to locate an office in the city and expand that office and its associated operations and workforce within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, and we'll see Colleen again for our economic development director for our staff report.
Yes, good evening. We have been in discussion with Andelen Biosciences about an expansion of their research and development facilities to the city of Dublin. They are a life science company that was established through groundbreaking research out of Nationwide Children's Hospital with gene therapy. This expansion project would result in 10 jobs moving from Columbus to Dublin with the commitment that those jobs will be backfilled in the city of Columbus, so Columbus will be made whole. There is no jobs that they will lose in this new expansion. The company is also committing to create 60 additional positions in Dublin, and the proposal that we have given the company is a seven-year, 20% performance incentive. It is capped at $122,880. The company also is eligible for a $10,000 facility grant for their laboratory fit-up costs. They, in return, would have to sign a 10-year minimum lease for at least 25,000 square feet, and the company will be present at the second reading on August 16th, but I can answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I have a question. I'm curious, I was just kind of looking this up. This is the gene therapy group that founded the muscular dystrophy. Is that correct? Not a cure, but a treatment for, is that correct?
I'm not, I don't know specifically.
Okay, I was just wondering, if so...
They have several gene therapies that they're working on, and there is a manufacturing plant under construction on OSU's West Campus right now, where I know that there'll be more than one therapy being produced.
I think it would be a very welcome company to come here, whether they do it or not, but if so, it's definitely a wonderful company. Thanks.
Other questions? Colleen, this is tied to payroll and not number of jobs, is that correct? It references jobs here, but I believe the incentive is tied to total payroll?
Correct. All the performance incentives that we negotiate are tied to the withholdings that we collect, not the headcount.
Thank you. Okay, second reading, public hearing will be on August 16th on that as well. Brings us to introduction, public hearing vote resolution, Resolution 43-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a developers' agreement with the Union County Engineers Office and Glacier Point Development and LTD for the Glacier Point Section 2 development.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Welcome back. The feeling's mutual.
The Glacier Point neighborhood, which is situated between Mitchell DeWitt and McKittrick Roads, is currently under development in Jerome Township in Union County, and that would be the blue star you see on the exhibit on your screens with McKittrick Road to the south, and then Mitchell DeWitt Road just kind of at the very bottom of the screen, and you can see where it extends over 33, so this is really on the north side of both of those roadways. Jerome Township approved the 439 single-family unit residential development for Glacier Point on approximately 249 acres of land outside of Dublin. Based on the good working relationship established over the past several years between Dublin staff and Union County, Dublin was included in the development and review of the traffic impact study for this project, which has resulted in Dublin receiving a financial contribution for infrastructure improvements along the Highland Roy, Highland Croy Road corridor. The two identified intersections with impacts are Highland Croy Road at McKittrick Road and Highland Croy Road at Brand Mitchell DeWitt Road. The total expected contribution for both intersections is $104,850. Dublin will receive one-half of the site contribution, or $52,425, prior to the recording of the final plat of Section 2 Phase 2. The final payment is due prior to recording of the final plat for any subsequent section. Resolution 43-21 permits the city manager to enter into a three-party agreement related to the neighborhood development between Union County, the city of Dublin, and Glacier Point Development Limited to accept the payments. I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have about this resolution.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Andy?
Yeah, is this a standard-type agreement that we would enter into with our neighbors and the developers?
We have entered into similar agreements in the past where we have shared interests and we do have shared impacts, so similarly, probably Autumn Rose Woods, I believe we entered into a similar agreement with Union County, and there's been others.
I'm thinking, in particular, the west side of Highland Croy, near Post Road, that area, were there similar type of relationships there?
Yes, and same happened previously, although it was never fully executed because the development didn't proceed, but on the Gordon property previously, which was within our jurisdiction, we had a very similar arrangement.
Okay, thank you.
And I did provide the illustrative plan on your screens too, so I apologize for the delay on that, but that's the development itself.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Yeah, Kathy?
Is the timing of this work at Highland Croy and Brand, is that at the same time as the interchange work?
It really hasn't been determined when that work would take place. What we've done in the past is really made those improvements when it's made the most sense, and certainly if we can tie it to another project that we're thinking of advancing. So we'll have that conversation with Union County about when that would be best to make those improvements.
I mean, during all of that work that's going to happen, it just seems logical that we think about that work and the associated road work, because the residents are going to be going through a lot during that, so that...
And we've been having those discussions presently as it relates to the Gordon property, the interchange, and what makes sense on Highland Croy, and the extent of the improvements, and the timing of those improvements, so I think we'll have more to report back to you on those in the future.
Great, I know that's a big project, but I know the residents would appreciate sort of one way through that, rather than multiple trumps of that improvement, so thank you for that.
Other questions, comments from council? Paul, do we anticipate perhaps any other contributions to this?
From this development itself?
From the surrounding area, anything else that we see on the horizon that would contribute to this?
I think as development continues to occur, especially in Jerome Township in our jurisdiction, for instance, I would say Paul's Corner would be another opportunity for us to take a look at impacts and then share in those contributions to mitigate those impacts.
Have we had the conversation with the folks at Jerome Township to continue to seek these types of contributions? I know they're not bound to collect them, but to continue to seek these contributions to offset some of the costs, because I am sure the $100,000-plus is not nearly sufficient to cover the expense of this improvement?
The answer to that's no, but we do have an ongoing dialogue with Jerome Township in accord...
and the corridor that a couple of your council members represent on. So, you know, if that's a discussion you want to take up a little more aggressively about those kind of contributions, that would probably be the best place to do that.
What do we anticipate the overall cost of this being, this improvement?
That was actually calculated, that's how these contributions were established. So, you know, this contribution itself was a portion of that overall improvement at both of these intersections. I don't have, if that's your question, I don't have that...
Well, so of the $3 million, if they contribute $104,850, there's a gap.
Yeah, if it's, absolutely. I mean, it's a portion of the improvement itself, really to mitigate their impacts, and it's usually not as great as what you think. I mean, it's probably less than 10% of the overall improvement typically.
I just think it's important to continue the conversation with them that, you know, we do appreciate the fact that they're garnering some funds for these improvements, but, you know, you still have nearly a $2.9 million gap after this contribution for the improvement to be made.
One thing I would add, if I could, Mayor, is that really it's because of the good relationship we have with the Union County Engineer, Jeff Stouch, and his team that we're even, you know, that we're at the table with this. And as you know, the county is the primary funder of infrastructure unless otherwise negotiated by ourselves at Jerome Township. So we appreciate the Union County Engineer allowing us to be a part of that conversation.
Yeah. Thanks. Anything further? Okay, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Resolution 44-21.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2021 storm structure maintenance program.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, Christina. Paul?
Members of council, staff conducted a competitive bid process for the 2021 storm structure maintenance program. On July 14th, 2021, two bids were received and publicly opened through BitExpress by the engineering staff for this program. This program is funded from the five-year capital improvements program, so $225,000 is directed towards annual storm structure, this annual storm structure program. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Strauser Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $190,134 for this program. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Paul. Council questions, discussion? Jane?
I just had one I'm very curious about, because you gave us a little diagram on the areas that needed improvement. I'm just kind of curious, because you can't read the streets, but on that area, five and six, which seem to have a lot of need, just, I'm just kind of curious, are these, is it an older area, or was there a particular problem with that? You have like, I don't know how many, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I don't know, like 12 different areas that need...
Yeah, it's mostly a product of the timing. I think that's actually post-preserve is where that's pointing to, that particular neighborhood. So it was constructed between 15 and 20 years ago.
Is that about how long you get before you have to start doing maintenance? It seemed like that was a newer area, that's why I'm asking, because I was kind of curious why we're having to do work there.
It's somewhat deceiving, and our primary culprit in storm structures themselves are the cinder brick that are used to shim the castings, or used to be used to shim the castings before the curb was placed. Those cinder brick of today are not those of yesterday, so they deteriorate much more quickly. We have quit using those, we actually use a polyethylene material now under the structures. So that's actually what we're going out and fixing predominantly are those failures.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Resolution 45-21.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2021 sidewalk maintenance program.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. We'll stick with Paul.
Lastly, for me this evening, staff conducted a competitive bid process for the 2021 sidewalk maintenance program. Again, on July 14th, there were three bids received for this program, publicly opened through BitExpress by engineering staff. The program is funded from the five-year capital improvements program in the amount of $250,000 for annual sidewalk maintenance. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Newcomer Concrete Services Incorporated in the amount of $234,860.40 for this program. And as always, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Council questions, discussion? Kathy?
So Paul, it must be July, because I'm going to talk about saving the trees when you do sidewalk maintenance, right? You'd be disappointed if I didn't say...
Be very disappointed.
I know you would, I know you would, so...
I knew, I told the trees you would ask about.
I know, I know. So I sincerely appreciate, because I know there's been huge strides in the number of trees that have had to be removed, and particularly more of the mature tree neighborhoods when this is happening, so I appreciate that. Is Newcomer the same one who's been doing the work, or is that a new?
Yeah, they've done this program previously, yes.
Okay, so I think that, and I appreciate that there's the engineering project inspector. Is there a companion person from forestry that will be, yeah?
We work in tandem with forestry. And the, I mean, we oversee obviously the removal of sidewalk panels, and when the roots are exposed, then they show up on-site to evaluate the tree, look at the root removal and the effect on the health of the tree.
Yeah, so I might give the same speech that I give every year soon. So, you know, it's so important that, you know, the sidewalk isn't removed and the roots are all moved, and then the forestry's called in, right, to look and say, after it's too late. So I know it's changed in recent years, so I'm...
It's not our practice.
Right, and so I'm thanking you for that and appreciating for that, because I know those trees are, you know, pretty important to the ongoing look down some of these more mature areas. So I want to thank staff's work for this. Megan's smiling, because every year I have to say this as well, but I sincerely appreciate it, and I know the residents do, so thank you, Paul.
I will also say that we do err on the side of trying to be conservative and, you know, protect the health of the tree, and if there's any question working with forestry to leave it and see what the health of the tree is, you know, after a few years. I often say that we know it's dead the instant we cut it down, so, you know, let's give it a chance if we can, and if it's safe to do so.
Paul, does this include sidewalk shaving?
Sidewalk shaving is funded out of the same source of funds, out of the $250,000. I think this year we're allocating about $35,000 towards shaving.
Okay, gotcha, but that's separate from this?
That's separate context.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, this is connected to that. I'm with Kathy on this saving of the trees, but, and this has come up a couple of times on new sidewalks, so I bring it up for consideration. New sidewalks, and, you know, I'll speak to Franklin Street as one, and walking that street, they have sidewalks that are supposed to be coming in design. Because they don't have large yards, all of their mature trees are where the sidewalks are going. So that's an issue now, and so, you know, I don't know how that's handled, but you would be cutting down 30 trees, maybe, if you put in sidewalks there. So it's something I think we need to talk about, because I think people, as Kathy said, love their front trees, and I think sidewalks are important, no doubt, but if it means that you're going to lose your entire front yard foliage coverage, and they're, some of these are older trees, especially in the historic district, you know, I guess I'd like to have some thought about that.
And we haven't yet started a detailed design on that. I mean, that's our next step with that South Franklin Street project.
Yeah, that one's really worth looking at. I mean, they have some really good-sized trees, and they're all along, and it's on both sides of the street, the sidewalk is.
Jane, if memory serves me correct, they had contemplated like a shero on the edge of the roadway for pedestrian traffic at one point in time.
I think at one point had that discussion. I mean, the current program or project is to have sidewalk itself, and it's a four-foot sidewalk. It is the dilemma of how to accommodate that.
I know, I think we'll have to talk about it, because they're very worried on that street that they're going to lose almost the entire canopy up and down that street, so...
Design will be a product of conversation with the neighborhood.
Right, and it's part of the historic district, so one has to give that a different kind of consideration, I would think, too, as well.
I can recall there being a conversation of replacing the edge of the roadway with a brick or brick-like material...
It would be better.
...that was going to be on the edge of the roadway versus having an independent, but, you know, I guess the message is that that's a conversation we'd like to have with that neighborhood when that time comes before we spend a whole lot of money on engineering.
Yeah, earlier than later, before you get into whole design and spend a lot of money on that, I think it's worth the conversation.
I agree.
We're glad to have that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Paul on this? This is your last opportunity to ask Paul a question tonight. Hearing none. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 46-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Dublin City Schools for the school resource officer program.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, and our staff report will be from Lieutenant Tabernak. Hardly recognized him out of, out of uniform there. Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening, members of council. I will not be here nearly as long as Mr. Hammersmith, but thank you for the opportunity to talk a few minutes about the great partnership between the Dublin Police Department and the city and Dublin City Schools. As you can see in your paperwork, Dublin Police and the Dublin City Schools are requesting a contract renewal for the SRO program during the 2021-2022 school year. This will be the 23rd year for the SRO program and a continuation of a longstanding partnership among Dublin City Schools, the city, and the police department. The Dublin Police Department Community Education Unit provides full-time SROs for each middle school, each high school, and then the middle school SROs are also responsible for all of our elementary schools. The SRO is focused on safety and crime prevention, as well as counseling and education for the youth in our community. The program is based on creating a safe learning environment for all Dublin City Schools students with the following guiding principles, bridging the gap between the police officers and juveniles, increasing positive attitudes towards law enforcement, encouraging more cooperation between juveniles and the police, reducing juvenile crime, and lastly, developing an atmosphere conducive to learning, which actually is our primary priority. Another hallmark of Dublin's SRO program is that it's based on input from school administration, teachers, faculty, and students. And in line with that concept, Dublin Police took community feedback over the past year from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion-Based Chiefs Advisory Committee, which included in-depth discussion about the SRO program, and Ms. Hawk is a member of that advisory committee. Dublin Police leadership invited school resource officers to speak to the committee about their role and function within the schools, offering space for community members to ask detailed questions about the guiding principles of the program, as well as training each SRO receives before and during their placement in each of the schools. Conversation centered on an SRO's counseling role, how an officer works to build strong relationships with students, and how they can connect students with mental health support and resources. Discussions with the Chiefs Advisory Committee also reviewed the in-classroom teaching that each SRO conducts on topics such as drug abuse prevention, civics-related issues, driving safety, personal safety, and active threat response. After those conversations about the program with the Chiefs Advisory Committee, Dublin Police is very confident that the ongoing SRO partnership with the school district is highly beneficial to the young people in our community. So with that, I thank you for your time and consideration, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you do. Having children in two different school districts, including Dublin, I can tell you that the SROs are an integral part of their lives. These officers are heroes to these kids, and in a way that is not that they look up to them or put them on a pedestal, it's really more from a relationship perspective. They know every kid's name. I don't know how they do it, but as a parent, I'm very appreciative of how Dublin does this and how we partner with the school board to make this a program that truly is about community, and really does help children and help bridge that gap between children and police officers. So I just wanted to say thank you, I'm really, really supportive of this program.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks, Lieutenant. I would echo those Christina's comments, and Chief, and what your folks do in the schools, and the cops know the kids and the kids know the cops, and it is such an important relationship, and the relationship that Dana has fostered with the school system and the city. This is just one really good example of how it should be done. So thanks a lot to you guys, what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say my wife was a school teacher, she's now finished, and she said that you guys were a key and integral part of that community, the schools, and really somebody for the students to look up to. So again, thank you, it's a great program.
Well, thank you for those comments, I really appreciate it.
Other comments?
Well, if you ever want to feel like you're walking around with a rock star, walk around with Officer Burke, and I think every kid that he's been involved in, each school that he's been involved in, he is just, just a treasure to them, and I know that's the case for all of our SROs, so thanks for that and thanks for what you do.
With that, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution 47-21.
Accepting the recommendations for FOP fact-finding.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, and Jennifer Miglietti has our staff report.
Good evening, members of the council. Resolution 47-21 authorizes the city manager to accept the recommendation of the FOP fact-finding. The fact-finder's recommendation is a result of a fact-finding hearing that was conducted on May 26th of 2021 due to an impasse in collective bargaining negotiations between the Fraternal Order of Police Capital City Lodge IX, known as the FOP, and the city of Dublin regarding wages and insurance. Earlier this afternoon, the FOP rejected the fact-finder's recommendations. However, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 4117.14(c6a), city council must also vote in acceptance or rejection of the fact-finder's recommendations. Staff recommends that council approve Resolution 47-21, accepting the fact-finder's recommendations, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good, thank you. Council questions, discussion? Okay, we will vote on this resolution. I just want to remind us that a affirmative vote is for accepting of the fact-finding. Very good, thank you, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, other business. I believe we have a report from Rosa Ocultree.
You should have received an email on June 29th from the State of Ohio Audit Manager asking if you would like to hold a post-audit conference to discuss the 2020 audit findings, and we are asking if you would like to schedule that meeting or waive the request.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone interested in scheduling that meeting? And then we are in agreement to waive that request?
Thank you.
Staff comments, general?
Okay, good evening, members of council, thank you. Since we had not met since the end of June, I just wanted to congratulate staff and the community on a great July for celebration. I'm sure some of you may mention it as well, and as you can see, looking across the street, we're getting the tent city ready for a modified, it's not the Dublin Irish Festival, it'll be Dublin Irish Day, so please check the calendar out for that, and I hope everyone participates. But again, I want to, I want to thank staff and everyone for getting that ready. Also, just again, congratulations on, on your vision and foresight and support of this great facility, and I think it's going to serve the community for many decades to come, and I appreciate all the extra effort by our council and also by the staff and architect and contractors, Rusally, who built it. Last, I just want to lift up a loss that we had of a staff member, Tammy Brown. As you know, passed, she served us for 34 years. Just wanted to lift her up. Thank you.
Dana, thanks for all you've done to support Tammy's family as well, and communicating how much we care for them, and how dearly she'll be missed by this, this part of her
how much we care for them and how dearly she'll be missed by this, this part of her family.
Yep, she's a wonderful employee and a great, great teammate.
Thank you. Okay, council reports, committee reports, admin committee.
Yes, good evening. So preparing for our retreat coming up in September. Thank you for the feedback and we will have some draft attendance to share with you very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Me too. Okay, thank you. Finance committee?
Nothing this time.
Thank you. Public services?
We're having a meeting on August 12th.
Okay. Liaison reports. Jane, we'll start with you with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
They will be, there really isn't anything new to report. We have just had some informal reviews and I will not be attending this coming Thursday's meeting, but will be well attended by those commission members and doing a very professional job, no doubt.
They're in good hands and we hope you enjoy your vacation. Dublin Bridges, anything?
They had a great fundraiser last Sunday. Spot River Ridge sponsored a food truck and the proceeds went to Dublin Bridges and they're doing fine work. So they continue to do so and we encourage everyone to sign up on their email page, bridges.org, and become part of the streaming emails and find out how you can hand-to-hand help members of our community that are in need.
And we'll stay with you. Lastly, for the Washington Township update.
I have no reports from Washington Township.
Assault chief here this evening earlier.
He was earlier.
We'll check in with him. Thank you. Kathy, 33 corridor.
I am pleased to say we are going to host an in-person meeting on the 13th here and we'll have the opportunity to have some discussions with our neighbors for the first time in this lovely space. So look forward to that.
Wonderful. Andy, Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing to report.
And the 33 corridor group?
No meetings since the last one.
Since her report 30 seconds ago. Okay. Mr. Reiner, Arts Council?
Just want to thank the artist, Houmao, for the fantastic painting he lent us out in the corridor tonight. He survived the Chinese Cultural Revolution under Mao. And when you leave, just take a look at that painting one more time because he told me he spent over a week just painting the clouds. A really extraordinary artist. So kudos for him and again, thank him for lending us a fantastic painting.
Our very own Dublin resident, yes. And Veterans Committee?
As a member of the Veterans Committee, I want to thank you, council, Dana, and the staff for bringing the Purple Heart City designation to our, to fruition, really. Another honor for our citizens in our community. So thank you all.
Thanks, John. Greg, Board of Education?
I report it's still summertime and so there's nothing to report.
It was good to see Dr. Marchausen here with us this evening and several members of the school board. So celebrating the opening of this facility. So that was great to see them. And I will report on the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. I trust you each have had maybe a bit of an opportunity to see the results from the Rapid Five Project, which combined the five major waterways that run north, south, through central Ohio and a visioning exercise of what could be with those. And I know that that will be a topic of further discussion for us, but they did reveal that this week down at the Columbus Metropolitan Club. So I wanted to make you aware of that. With that, we will go, we're not going to do round screen tonight. We get to do round table. That's good news, right? So we'll start down here on the end with Mr. Keeler.
Thank you. I'll start by echoing Dana's comments. The event staff deserves recognition for what I think was a really successful Independence Day celebration. They even pulled off excellent weather. I don't know how they did that, but after rain and nasty storms a few days before, it was quite, quite a good celebration. Secondly, I'd like to recognize a resident, Fred Renner. He sent a, an article onto city council here in the last couple of days. Very thought-provoking article on long-term planning. I'd encourage all of you to, to read it. And anyone that's watching, we're happy to provide a copy of that for you. Really makes you think about the future of development. I'd like to finally make a couple requests as we settle into our new home here. First, boxes of Kleenex to wipe away the tears. And secondly, a speedier screen. Maybe hook it up to 220 or something? I don't know.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, Jane?
My turn, huh? Well, first and foremost, after seeing this wonderful dedication, I have to thank, well, there's quite a few people in the audience, but, but Megan and Brian and the architects, everybody on the steering committee. But primarily, I think, too, I know how much work it is. It was blood, sweat and tears up until the last minute. This is what's a community effort because early on, at the very beginning of this process, many, many people were asked, what does a good community center, a city hall, look like? So bringing this together was really something that was the voice of the community, not just the voice of a few. So even though there were some nice compliments tonight, it really was not any one particular person. It was, it was this entire community. And I hope that they see this as their, and I've said this a million times, the living room of the people. So I think we'll have some wonderful events here, some wonderful celebrations, some good conversations, some great discussions, and hopefully we'll just keep moving this city forward by doing that. So thank you all. It was a wonderful and wonderful experience. Having said that, I just want to say that the 2035 Big Idea Survey is out there for the community. And we are a really creative bunch of people up here, but we don't have the ideas that are percolating, no doubt, in the community. We would love everyone, and I hope whoever's listening, to send in your big ideas. And we don't care how big, how crazy, how unaffordable they might be. Dana, you just cover your ears right like that. We want to hear your big ideas because you just never know what could happen with people coming together with some creative thoughts. So that and a big thank you to our council members here that built the most gorgeous table I have ever seen in, in our conference room. So thank you, Andy. That was, that is, you are talented as can be. So that's mine. Thanks.
Thanks, Jane. Greg?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. Robert Rance, I just, I got to meet him for the first time the other day when I stopped into this building. Welcome. You are, he's our new deputy city manager. For people that have not had a chance to meet him, and now you had your first in-person meeting here with city council. If you want to tender your resignation immediately, I probably understand. No, but in all seriousness, you are joining an exceptional staff. They are extraordinary. And you're sitting in an, in an example of what makes them so extraordinary. This building, I don't know, Dana, a couple of decades, we've been talking about this building. And they pull it off in the middle of a global pandemic and pull it off on time. And you see the result. And that is what this staff is capable of. And, and another quick comment, you know, that the, the attitude of the organization starts at the top. And that's with Dana. And you, you, one thing that Dana has never forgotten from when he was development director all the way up through and sitting up on this dais, watching the contributions he has made to this community, he has never forgotten the human side of this, of this whole operation. And that's what makes Dana a truly extraordinary leader. And for as long as we still have him in this job, you soak up as much as you possibly can because it flows from the top down. And Dana is absolutely an extraordinary leader that this community has been very fortunate to have. And the only final comment is, you know, we've been meeting virtually for 14 months now, I guess, a year?
14 years, I thought it was. It was only months?
Maybe more so tonight for me than any other thing I've come across is being in the same room with you folks and talking is so much better than on video. And at the end of the day, you know, that which doesn't kill us only makes us stronger. And if we learn from what we've just come through, maybe we'll remember to just be a little bit more patient with each other and appreciate being able to be in the same room with each other because it makes all the difference in the world. Thanks.
Geez, Greg, could you give Robert any more pressure? He'll do fine. Yes, thank you for a wonderful Fourth of July. It was, everything was pulled off. I don't even know how you guys do it. My heart goes out to Tammy's family. Thank you for all of her service and all the work that she's done for the city of Dublin. Welcome, Robert. I'm really happy to be back here with all of you. I know that I joke that I'm the only introvert up here and I really miss my slippers, but the truth of the matter is, is that I much prefer to be here with all of you. So, and then I could staff. I'm so happy to be back.
John?
Welcome, Robert. I had a nice conversation with you. And I also want to just say it was a great opening. Everybody just put a lot of effort into this and kudos on the Fourth of July. The opening was wonderful and thank you for attending the opening, those who took the time to come out this afternoon and celebrate with us. Read the, the blurb this morning about the National International Award for the Bridge. And I think we're going to get a lot, a lot of compliments on the bridge. And that's a great honor and I hope that gets out to the public. It will be the focal point of our community and it is now driving all kinds of people up into this area to come up here for dinner. And as we were hoping in the planning stages years ago, thank you, Mr. Peterson, because you were still around for that. I think it's going to be the kind of thing, it's a focal for our whole city. And it's going to drive a lot of business into our community and promote Dublin in a way it's never been promoted before. So as this thing accrues awards, please get them out because it was really exciting to read that this morning. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Kathy?
Yes, I too want to share my condolences to the Brown family. I can tell you from talking to people here tonight, there's so much love being sent your way. So we're so very sorry. You know, I want to just take a moment to recognize the members of the committee that worked on this building on council and Greg and Chris and Jane. And yes, Jenny, I'm looking at you. So, I mean, so much work and staff. Like Greg said earlier, we were talking, he goes, Kathy, do you know how many decisions we had to make from everything about the wood, the, where the plugs go, et cetera, so forth? And I said, thank you, Greg. So thank you all for all of your work. And I just wanted to reflect that I think we all felt tonight that whether we agree with each other in government, whether we argue about the way things should be done, it is clear tonight from the passion that we've heard, the excitement that we've seen, the willingness to come share people's views and the wonderful sacrifices that the folks who are Purple Heart and everyone that has served for our right to be here. It was just such a wonderful way to christen this new facility and so happy to be back with all of you and for the opportunity to serve this community.
Thank you. We've had a special day since we were together last and Andy's birthday on the 21st. So happy belated to you. And, and prior to us being together again, we will celebrate another birthday with John. So we wish you all the best on your coming birthday. Again, welcome to you, Robert. We, we look forward to working with you for, for many, many years to come. And, you know, I can tell you that, that it has been a, a very long and arduous process to hold these meetings virtually. And I can tell you that there's no greater feeling than sitting in this room with you all, sitting in my office trying to do this at home while I was mandating that my teenagers stay off of the internet so that I wouldn't drop off the call. They, they send their thanks because they're probably at home gaming or, or something that they're using up all kinds of bandwidth that is now available to them because I am here. But I can tell you that the greatest gift that we can give one another is being with. And tonight, we are with and it feels very good. So thank you for sharing your time and being here and being with because that is the greatest thing that we can do together. With that, I have nothing further and we will stand adjourned.